I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, October 6, 2022, to order. Will the crowd please take their role?
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
President Coker?
Yes. Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. We now move to be petitions and communications. Number one, community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
With the arrival of the fall season, Village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least fifteen feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glen Side Fire Protection District at (630) 668-5323, or the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at (630) 894-9080. During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact the Public Works Department at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
Join the Glendale Heights Police Department for Scary Movie Night with a cop at Safety Town on Friday, October 7. We will be showing Focus Pocus at dusk along with fun interactions with Glendale Heights finest. Popcorn and refreshments will be provided by Kevin East Club of Glendale Heights, and movie licensing is sponsored by the Glen Side Library. For more information, please contact Tanya McCo at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
Come out to the Sports Hub on Friday, October 28, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for pajama movie night featuring Coco. So put on your pajamas, wrap yourself in your fluffiest blanket, and join us for movie night. Concessions will be available for purchase. For more information, please call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Frights are back and better than ever at this year's Honda Trail on Saturday, October 29, at Reskin Park. Groups will be led on a guided tour from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. through the trail's six hair-raising scenes, which are home to the most menacing and creepy creatures Glendale Heights has ever seen. Beware, you may encounter a few surprises along the way. The tours will run every ten minutes. Kid-friendly tours with less interaction with creatures will run from 6:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Register by October 28 for a discounted rate of $5 for residents and $10 for non-residents. Those looking to pay on October 29 at the Honda Trail will pay a resident rate of $8 and non-resident rate of $13. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. I hear Pat's gonna be there scaring people.
Yeah, I'll be there. Right next to you.
Oh, good. Frank and Pat, yeah.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Executive Secretary, Ms. Justeet Sangha, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is proud to present Brittany's Trees, a local tradition and nationally-recognized organization that celebrates the holidays and memory of Brittany Veline. Brittany was a young girl from Carroll Stream who loved Christmas trees, but unfortunately passed away in 2005 from a heart condition. Money raised from the sale of Brittany's Trees goes to support the Sudden Arrhythmia Death Syndrome's foundation. Officers will be delivering and setting up Brittany's Trees on Saturday, November 26. To order your Brittany's Trees, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. For more information, please call the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Thank you. The next coffee and chat with the village president and the board will be Saturday, November 5, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village's president or village's board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. With the cooler weather coming, the final day for the splash pad at Campbell Park will be Friday, October 7. We hope everyone was able to enjoy this splash pad while it was open. The other activities at Campbell Park are available year-round, so come visit all the new playground equipment, fitness area, and more. If you have any questions, please contact the Sports Hub (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
If I could just clarify, Mayor, sorry. The last day at a splash pad was today. It'll be closing tomorrow. So maintenance staff will be out there tomorrow, winterizing it and getting it closed for the winter.
Okay.
Just because it's gonna be 50.
Trustee Pojak, please. Welcome.
Stop by the Center for Senior Citizens on Tuesday, October 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Super Senior Mobile Unit. This program is a great way to renew your driver's license, take Rules of the Road class, and have a vision screening exam. The Rules of the Road class runs from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and registration is required for this class. Registration is not required for all other driving services. For more information, please call (630) 260-6050. I might add, there's no road testing. Is that correct? Did they change that?
Correct. No road testing.
I know. Some people have asked already on that. That's it.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is getting in the holiday spirit. Halloween on Monday, October 31, and we would like to remind residents that trick-or-treating hours are from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also, on Halloween evening, we invite children 15 and under to come and trick-or-treat at Safety Town. Halloween for a safe and family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And for more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya at (630) 909-5459. And I would like to add something. I went recently on a tour with the seniors to a casino in Galena, and we had talked so much about a bus driver. Our bus driver was wonderful. And he asked me to please say something about him, so I thought I would. He was very nice. His name is Bob, and he's excellent. So thank you, Bob, and thank you, Board.
Did you make money?
No, I lost money.
Okay, ma'am. Welcome, and thank you very much. And number two, proclamations. We have the following proclamations. A proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Filipino-American History Month. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamation.
Go for it.
None. So I will... There are no objections, I will sign this. C, public discussion of agenda items. We now go on the public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Anybody from public? Yes, yes.
Agenda items.
Agenda items. None.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Okay. Please state your name, your address.
That's all right. Rebecca Tyber, 2N320 Glen Allen Road, Glendale Heights, Illinois 60139. And I'm back to talk about your charitable organization, and I was thinking about it. It's like, wow. Why would the Village of Glendale Heights really need something like that? Because you have people that have gone out there, like me and Franz Gallafini, God bless her soul, and Jan Guavera and Nicole Lewis, that pounded the dirt, and all the vendors, all the businesses, all the people that we have in contact, that I have gotten money for the car show, for the Historic House, for the charity golf classic, and a lot of different things. And we have so many vendors that we deal with and that we work with here, from the golf courses, car dealerships, hospitals. I mean, I don't really want to go out and mention names, but a lot of businesses in town, they donate happily. And then the ones that are on the shelf, we go and we call, we go and we face-to-face ask. We've gotten a lot of money. For a village to go 501(c)(3) doesn't make sense. For an elected official to be on a board of giving money to Glendale Heights does not make sense to me. And so that's one. And then I see that you're also doing another early retirement and setup program, so I'm just curious who you're pushing out now. You've already pushed out Mike Marin and Joanne Culturebender and myself. Just curious, who's the next on the chopping block?
Is there somebody else who wants to make a comment?
Yeah, I don't want to answer that one. Okay. Just curious.
No, do none, ma'am?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I think there's a gentleman right there.
Oh, yes, please. And next is then Kim Darlin.
Oh, did you want to go, Kim?
No, I wasn't.
I'm sorry. I just have a question and a... or two questions. One, under Old Business, are you guys gonna discuss that topic that Becky was talking about tonight? Because I also don't understand why you're starting a second 501(c). And then my second question is, why are you rejecting all the bids for the calendars and printing? Are you guys gonna... are we not gonna get those mailed out again? Are you going back to online only? Or is it just a purchasing thing?
That'll be a discussion when that topic comes up on the agenda as to what the board wants to do, but they're being rejected because the pricing we got is tripled.
Oh, wow.
So the board's gonna have... We're gonna have a discussion tonight when that topic comes up as to what the... some direction from the board and how they want us to proceed, because the quotes we got in for the bids tripled.
Well, I just want to say as a resident, I enjoy getting the newsletter and especially the Parks and Recreation Guide. You know, I signed my grandson up for two of Keith's programs this year because of the guide coming and thumbing through it and finding these programs that were available for little guys that I didn't even know we had, because he's only four. So when you're debating the cost, hopefully you'll think about the cost versus the benefits to the resident, because not everybody goes online. I don't... I mean, I don't like going online to look stuff up. I like that you send me the guide. I look through it, and I can see what's available. So I know printing has gone up a lot, but, you know, the cost in comparison to what you spend a lot of money on, the other things...
Or the decision for the rec guide, though.
Well, it's...
It's for the calendar and the newsletters.
Well, newsletter too, but, I mean, if you chop those, I would assume rec would be next. So I'm just... Hopefully, you're not gonna get rid of those, because as a resident, I enjoy them. So that's my comment.
And Mr. Ed, we are working on that. We are talking to other publishers.
Other printers?
Yeah, other printers.
Okay. All right. I mean, I know it was debated last year, too, cost versus, you know, people doing it online, but I don't know. I guess I'm old school. I like having it in my hand, and I like thumbing through it. I don't like... I don't want to have to go online and scroll through to try and find something that I don't even know is there. That's how I found the two programs for my grandson, was by going through the book, so.
We are working on that as soon as we get good, which we are... we will get... we will continue that, you know.
All right.
Hopefully.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Yeah. Thank you. Kim Darlin, please. Next.
No, I have the first media in the hall.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would like to say...
Okay. Sure. Yes, ma'am.
May I speak?
Yeah, sure, sure.
All right. I want to say that I have to agree with you because I can see eliminating the calendar only because we get so many calendars through the mail that a lot of people disregard keeping our calendar. But our newsletters and all of the recreations that we have, the seniors, I know they're costly, but I'm going to tell you that I think they're a good cost. We need this information available to us. I'm only speaking for myself. I'm not one to go on the computer and look to see what's available in Glendale Heights, but when I get those newsletters or those bulletins or whatever... what are they called? Help me.
Newsletter.
Pardon?
Newsletter.
Well, not necessarily the newsletter, but the...
Rec guides.
Yes. And so I'd really... I really like getting them. As for Becky, I do want to say this. I don't think we have any intentions of being a 501. Okay? So our village is going to stay the way it is as far as I'm concerned. We've always done everything right, and we're gonna keep doing it that way. All right, Beck? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, ma'am. Very... Anybody else? Executive Session. There is an executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Are deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Open Meeting Act 5 LNI compiled statute 120 by 2(c)(2)? Is there a motion to recess meeting to executive session? I did motion for that. For executive session.
So moved.
Uh, Dr... sorry, Bill Schmidt?
So moved.
Second, Honorable Deputy Mayor Maritato. Uh, discussion. Non-Rule Call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
This meeting is in recess. The recess is ended, and the meeting will come to order. Consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you. Would Acting Village Administrator Doug Flynn, please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of September 22, 2022. Two, approval of special board meeting minutes of September 29, 2022. Three, approval of the counts payable listing of October 6, 2022 in the amount of $1,751,989.01. Four, an ordinance to amend certain sections of Title 11 entitled zoning regulations of the Admissible Code of Ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a change order number 1 to Sabre Manufacturing Company for the purchase and installation of an articulated telescope insulated material handling unit for the Village of Glendale Heights. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a second amendment to the contract between Synerx Central LLC and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, a resolution to authorize the execution of a second amendment to the agreement for professional engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades project. Eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional design engineering services for the 2023 street program. Nine, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State County and Missile Employees, AFSMI Council 31, AFL CO Local 3788. Ten, a motion to approve the 2023 summer seasonal pay plan. Eleven, motion to approve pay request number 11 to Joseph J. Henderson and son, the digestion rehabilitation project in the amount not to exceed $122,069.64. Twelve, approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Pojak?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, Trustee Light. Second, Trustee Light. Oh, is that okay? Uh, discussion. No discussion. Rule Call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old Business. A resolution to approve, ratify, and execution and filling of articles of incorporation for the NFP Corporation Giving Glendale Heights Charity tabled at the September 22, 2022 meeting, RES 2022-r-94. Is there a motion to remove this from the table? None. So this motion is...
All right. So it'll stay on the table, and it'll just fail.
Yeah. Uh, New Business. A motion to waive first reading on New Business Item 2 and 3. Number one, emotion... I need motion for that. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Trustee Light, second. Discussion. No discussion. Rule Call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
A motion to waive first reading on New Business Item 1 and 3... Item, sorry. Item 2 and 3 is approved. Two, an ordinance to correct a subscriber error, ordinance 2022-62, first reading. Number three...
First reading was waived. Right. First reading was waived, so you need a motion.
I need motion for...
Yeah, a motion to approve.
I need motion to approve. Uh, Trustee Maritato and Trustee Schmidt, second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. None. Rule Call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number four, an ordinance to amend section...
Number three, Mayor.
Number three.
Sorry, number three. An ordinance to waive bid and authorize the execution of a payroll processing services agreement, ordinance 2022-63, first reading.
Is waived on that as well?
Oh, it's waived as well, you know, so... Number four...
No, no. You need a motion.
A motion...
To approve.
To... I need motion to approve, you know. Trustee Maritato and Trustee Pojak, second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. None. Rule Call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
No.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number four. An ordinance to amend section 7-8-4 entitled "No Parking at Any Time", exceptions of chapter 8 entitled "Traffic Schedules", of title 7 entitled "Motor Vehicle and Traffic" of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, parking restrictions on Western Avenue, first reading. I need motion to...
No, because it's only first reading.
No. Number five, a resolution rejecting all bids for the Glendale Heights Community Calendar Printing Project, RES 2022-r-101. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-r-101? I need motion for that. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Second, Trustee Light. Discussion.
So if you'd like Darcy to explain the bid process and what happened with the bid process and why we're asking you to reject it...
Please.
For the calendars, we received two bids. The only acceptable bid was for $23,304. That is, our last bid was for $6,900. So this is probably about three or four times what the bid was. The normal contractor that bid, he put a contingency on his bid, and it didn't include paper. So I had to reject that bid automatically because anybody could have bid project without the paper. So the only valid bid that came in was $23,304. And that doesn't include postage.
And the last bid was...
$6,900. Mm-hmm.
What we paid... what we paid last year for our calendar was $6,994. What the bid for this year is, is $23,000.
That's insane.
So we did meet with another printer yesterday, and we sent that printer an RFP, the RFP we sent out. We'll see if that person, by the next board meeting, submits a bid. But the question for the board is, we need to have some guidance on how to proceed with these numbers.
So is that offer for bid is still open?
Yeah, we'll entertain bids if somebody can come in and get us closer to the number we were at in 2021. 2022, we'll entertain bids. We're getting up to the point, though, that we have to make a decision on a printer because they go out pretty soon. They need to get printed. But the, in good conscience, we couldn't agree to this bid without some input from the board on what to do, uh, as far as the printing costs go.
Yes, uh, trustee Pajak.
Doug, did, um, within that questionnaire we had through the NIU?
Mm-hmm.
Was this involved in that, this particular, the calendar and the newsletter?
Uh, we'll.
See what the residents will actually want?
I honestly don't remember if it was on a survey or not, we'll have the survey results next week at our, at our retreat next week. Um, but you know, from the last meetings that we've had on this, the board, you know, we, we stopped printing them and had an opt-in and then the board reauthorized the printing and the mailing of the calendars. So that's where, you know, we, we, we stopped the printing of the calendars and went online, actually we were printing a thousand of them up. People opted in, only two hundred people at the time opted in and we would have calendars available here for people to pick up if they needed. Uh, the board came back after, I assume, getting phone calls from residents and mandated that we start mailing the calendars back out. So that's what we did. Seven thousand dollars was probably reasonable. I don't know that twenty-three thousand is a reasonable number and that's for the board to decide and give us guidance.
So what time?
Uh, trustee Light, please.
Okay, um, honestly, I like the opt-in program part of it. I mean, because I had residents that were getting newsletters, you know, four and five at the same house because post office can't possibly do their job correctly. So it came into, I, I got a lot of flack for that because we just sent these things out in bulk mail, which I'm assuming is cheaper. Instead of putting an address on every house to send them to every house, it's cheaper to send them in bulk mail. I like the opt-in idea, but what would that do as far as like having to put an address now on a house because they opted in? Uh, would the savings be at all? Because the calendar, I don't need a calendar, I got my phone, most people do.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't print them with the addresses on, right? Because people will be, um, asking to opt in throughout the year. And we would just print a label up and mail it out to them regular mail. So, uh, I don't think that's, that's, that would be a cost to us and I don't think that would be an issue to us. Uh, it's, it's, you know, right now, it's thirteen thousand, five hundred, um, calendars. You know, we would probably print a thousand and have them available for people. That was what we were going to do last year. So, um, you know, obviously the cost savings between thirteen thousand, five hundred and a thousand will be significant.
Yeah, a lot. Well, it's like I said, the opt-in program, I mean, if it went directly to them because the residents are getting multiples in a house and nobody's getting anything at their house. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that, that they just throw them wherever they may go. So to me, I like the opt-in, at least I know if they ask for it, they'll get it. Most people, I mean, the younger generation, yeah, they just, they have their phones and they'll go online. Um, but I agree with that on the whole part of the brochure for the rec, that one has to go out because I still think that's a great sales tool.
And, and same with the senior.
Yes.
Letter, right? The senior letter needs to go out, the rec brochure needs to go out.
Yeah.
Um, we're talking about the calendar and.
Newsletter.
The newsletter.
Yeah, that I could un-opt in for my.
Of the two, uh, the newsletter might be of most value to the residents, uh, because the, the, the timing is, is more current. Uh, the calendar as dates change isn't current.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Uh, trustee Pajak, please. Uh, sorry, trustee Siddiqui first.
What is the deadline to decide this? I mean, how much time do we?
I'm gonna ask David, the PR guy.
We'd really have to have a decision by in the next month and a half, I would say.
Okay, because you are exploring other vendors as well, correct?
Well, there was a, we, we met with a printing company yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Who didn't participate in the RFP, but Darcy mailed that company the RFP.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll see if they come back with a better pricing. Um, we don't, we honestly don't have to do anything today, other than reject the, the, the twenty-three thousand dollar bid that we have. Um, and come back, we can come back to the board with the new bid if it comes in or we can come back to the board with, here's the options and here's different pricing for different, um, volume of prints.
Trustee Pajak, next.
This is for Dave too. Um, my suggestion, forget the calendar. Keep the newsletter, but add one sheet every so many sheets. When the months change for the calendar, you're talking maybe three sheets front and back with some other information, calendar on one side, information for that month on the other side. So you're only talking maybe six sheets.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, you forget the calendar, now we got the newsletter.
Import the calendar into the newsletter.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what the, the survey from NIU.
Okay.
That was my suggestion.
Just keep in mind that it does have to be in multiples of four, um, so that will affect obviously some pricing. Um, just the way that printers work, um, and the way that it's bound and stitched together. Um, so it'd be either four, eight, twelve, sixteen.
Well, whatever.
Anybody else? Roll.
Yes, I would like to say something. You're saying that right now we give, we print out or we mail thirteen thousand, five hundred calendars and they're asking twenty-three thousand, three hundred. That's almost two dollars a calendar and with all the calendars that we receive, I don't think that that's important. What I'm having a problem understanding is last year, all, all we had, we paid sixty-nine hundred, that was only fifty cents a calendar. I don't know why we even argued about it last year. Because this year it's.
Because that was almost double from the year before that.
Oh, was it really?
Almost.
Alright, but like, uh, I think most of the board, I, I prefer not to have a calendar and I like the newsletter. I think the newsletters are very, very important, I'm sorry. And as for a calendar, you know what? On the senior, uh, on the senior newsletter, there is a calendar in there. Because it tells you everything that the seniors are doing. Of course, if you need a calendar that bad, you could look through that one too, if you think of it.
So we'll, we'll bring back options.
Alright.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder? Yes. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pajak?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero one is approved. Number six, a resolution rejecting all bids for the Glendale Heights Community Newsletter Printing Project, RES twenty-twenty-two dash R one zero two. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero two? Uh, trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion, I believe we did already, you know?
Well, I think there's different facts.
There is different.
For the news, excuse me, for the newsletter bid,
Yes.
we received three no bids, all talking about the cost of paper and the price, price of printing. We did receive one bid and that bid had contingencies for surcharges and they couldn't even quantify the surcharge in a flat amount to give us a bid, so I had to reject the bid because it had contingencies. So there really is not really a choice but to reject the bids. If we go out and solicit other quotations or, um, proposals, excuse me, quotations or proposals, we can do that, but the bid process that this went through, we didn't get a valid bid.
Trustee Pajak.
Darcy, did we, did you get a bid from the previous printer for this particular one?
Yes, Creekside was the only bid that we got and they basically came back with contingencies saying that they gave us a couple different paper options which were good. However, they came back and said that they would have to add, um, between a three hundred dollar and a thousand dollar surcharge per page, per, um, and then they would try to rectify the cost of paper. It was an addendum that they added to their bid, therefore I couldn't accept the bid as it was. It, it just wasn't a valid bid, so I ask that you reject bids and if you're still interested in having the newsletter go out, we can look at some other options and see if we can obtain a proposal from somebody to be able to do that.
Okay.
Keep in mind though, if we lower the amounts, the, the cost of printing increases. Meaning that when you said, Mary, for example, the, it was thirteen thousand, five hundred calendars were two dollars apiece. If you print only two thousand calendars, they may be more like four or five dollars apiece. Just to give you an idea of how that kind of works with printing, the higher the quantity, the lower the price break per thousand that you pay.
I mean, we've used Creekside for I don't know how many years now, they wouldn't do nothing for us?
Well, Creekside now was bought out and they're now plural.
Oh.
So I believe they've changed a little bit their management and the way that they do business. Again, we can go back to them with their, they didn't include the cost of paper, we can see, hey, we're ready to go. Can you give us a quote cost today? Can you obtain the paper? And there is, like I said, some paper shortages going on, so.
Right.
There's going to be delays in the printing as well.
Thank you, Darcy.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Schroder.
I would like to, I would like to hear some quotes too, because, uh, you know what? Just the, uh, the feel of the paper too has a lot to do with the cost, alright?
Exactly.
Because our bulletin's from church, one church has a cheaper paper and the other has a more expensive. But you know what? They both read the same, so I, I don't feel that of the, uh, the type of paper that we use is that important as the use that comes with it.
Exactly, so maybe we can look at some other options.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pajak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero two is approved. Number seven, a resolution approving and authorizing the implementation of a voluntary separation incentive program, RES twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero three. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero three? I need motion for that, trustee Pajak. And second is trustee.
Light.
Light. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pajak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash one zero three is approved. Each public discussion on agenda items. We now go on to public discussions.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, mayor.
Of agenda items, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Yes, yes, sir. Please state your name, your address.
Uh, my name is Tom Foley, my address is one N seven-three-two Western Avenue in unincorporated Glen Ellen. Um, sorry, I feel kind of outnumbered here.
Hmm.
Um, I'm sure some of my neighbors would have been here, but this letter was just dropped off today in the mailboxes. I don't think everybody checks their mail, uh, on a daily basis. Um, I have some questions about the parking restriction. Um, I'd like to know what, what the issue is with cars parked down the street on Western Avenue.
Uh, chief or?
So at the curve that starts Western Avenue, uh, there's a, obviously a bull in the road. That curve has created, uh, some traffic hazards when there's cars parked at that curve. With cars trying to go north and south at the same time with cars parked there.
Ha- has there ever been an accident?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, but, um, there is a significant safety issue there.
What's the speed limit on the street?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Do you know how wide the street is, sir?
I'm gonna guess thirty feet.
Okay. Do you know how wide an average vehicle is?
Hmm, I'm gonna guess eight feet.
Uh, a three-quarter ton pickup truck is eight feet. So it's a little, a little, a little less wider than that. Six.
Okay.
Seven max. So at twenty-five miles an hour, what's the safety concern?
You are actually incorrect though, we did do a speed study over here. We did do a speed study and there was a, a traffic problem on Western Avenue. So we put the speed sign on there and what that does is it studies the traffic that goes through that area and there was a, a significant amount of speed because, like you said, the road is wider, so that causes people to go faster. The curve adds to that, so they did do this, we did do the speed study and it was done, uh, let me see here, September twentieth is when we got the results for it, so we put that out. And it actually was sent out to all the officers just because of that.
Okay, I, I did, I did see the camera there, uh, on the street and, uh, um, even with cars parked on the side of the street, I, I pick up my daughter from the school bus there every day at, at Third and Western and, uh, routinely thirty-five, thirty-eight miles an hour and people not stopping at the stop sign, uh, further south of Third. Um, that has nothing to do with a curve. Um, my opinion is, is that if you do not have parking on that street, people are going to drive faster than they are now. I have a, I have a daughter, all my neighbors have kids. Um, I would say that would be more of a safety concern um, than people not, than a speed limit not being enforced. So that it is in fact safe whether cars are on the street or not on the street.
There is a lot, the, what you're saying is correct and there, and I'm, I'm not going to just say Western of, and this has come up a lot. The, a lot of the streets that are wider, which a lot of them are snow routes, because they're wider, people do travel faster on there. And, um, not just Western, I'm gonna say, I don't know, ten, fifteen streets around town, we've had the same complaints. And we put the speed sign out there and you're correct. And the same thing that you say, that we should have more traffic enforcement. The issue is, how many officers can we have out doing traffic enforcement at one time, correct? And we all, or it's a fair assessment. The, it's just the way the roadways are designed. Your, your idea is the cars because it slows people down, there's also other ideas too.
Necessarily.
The design of roadway, isn't that something that we've talked, um, with some of the trustees and board members about that? It's the designs of the road, that's what causes people to go faster. The whole idea by that curve is because people do drive faster, now you're hitting the curb. Are you having, increasing the chances of, of some other accidents going into a house or some other um, ways that people will crash because the curb is there? That is one of the ideas behind the cars not parked there.
Well, I, I've lived there for three years, I've never seen an accident there. Um, I've also never seen, uh, GH Police Department doing speed enforcement on that street either. Um, and, and no offense to you, sir, I understand, but, um, if safety's a big concern and that curve's a big concern, I would have thought that that would have been the case at least first off,
Right.
uh, before depriving residents of the ability to park in front of their own home. Again, just my opinion and I appreciate your, your comments back as well. Um, there's a, there's another street close by me, it's Cedar Street. Um, I used to live on Cedar Street in, in Glendale Heights. Um, it's actually narrower than Western, there's parking allowed on, on one side of the street. Um, are you guys planning on eliminating parking on Cedar Street as well?
The, the complaint came through about the curve, I'll be honest, that's where it came through, that's what I heard about the curve.
Did it come through from a Glendale Heights resident or a Glen Ellen resident?
It came through, actually it came through a Glendale Heights resident.
Yeah, I'm guessing from that, that area that's just north.
Prior divisions.
Yeah, okay, and there's, there's another, there's another access to that neighborhood that's blocked, I don't know why. But there is another path of egress available to that neighborhood that's currently blocked.
Yeah, we are not considering opening that, that's, that's totally a separate issue, yeah.
Hmm, well, would it, would it, it's, it isn't curved. It's straight.
That's true.
Yeah, and that whole neighborhood, Greenbrier is a, one big curve and there's parking allowed on that street as well, sir. Yes, there is. I, I used to walk it three times a week, it's a perfect mile all the way around.
So Tom, would it, so in a, in one of the previous board meetings, we had discussed a lot of happen to with Western and there was a flaw when the design of it and we have spoken about this before. There were supposed to be traffic lights put at that intersection, correct?
I, I will tell you this, I've seen some horrific accidents on North Avenue and Western.
Correct.
And nothing's been done about it.
That's.
Multiple accidents with young children, uh, involved in the accidents.
In, you're correct, in what?
And I've seen nothing done for that. I've seen no accidents in front of my house, but you want to deprive me, my family and my neighbors the right to park in front of our own home.
This is brought, brought up about the board, about North and Western and you're correct about that. The problem with that is we do not control who can put and what lights can get put there. When they did that connection, that was what they were told, lights were going to be put up and they weren't put up. So, and like, uh, trustee Siddiqui said, that is a, a whole different argument and we're not going to say you're wrong on that because you are right.
But the area of Greenbrier is one big curve as well. And that, yet they're allowed to park. They're allowed to park on the street. Cedar's got one big curve, they're allowed to park on the street.
Excuse me, is, isn't that unincorporated, Western Avenue?
The, the roadway.
The roadways are.
Ours, the roadways are, the houses are unincorporated.
And chief, did you, how many complaints did you receive, you know, for this? For not parking, you know, in that area, you know, just one or more?
I was involved with the actual speeding of the vehicles. The actual parking issue did not, is, did not come from the police department.
Can I say one more thing? I've been on that road many times, I drive a three-quarter ton pickup truck, there's plenty of room for two cars to pass. Um, and especially if you do the speed. And especially if you do the speed limit, it's, there's plenty of room, even with cars parked down the street. Plenty of room, especially now that you guys trim the uh trees on the east side of the street, so the branches don't hit your car when you drive by. Easily, you can fit two cars. You can, a school bus and a car. I've seen it. I've watched it. There's, there's plenty of room. At twenty-five miles an hour, that's not an extreme curve. It's not a right angle curve. It's a very mild curve. I can, I can probably measure the angle if you, if you'd like, but I don't have that information with me. I just, I don't see the need. I mean, are you saying no parking at all? So if I have guests over, they can't, they can't park on my street? I mean, I am a resident of Glen Allen, but I pay for water in Glendale Heights. I worked in Glen He- Glendale Heights for over thirty years. You guys did active shooter training at our, at our plan on regency. I helped, I helped facilitate that. So I'm just curious as to, to why this is, being that we're all Glen Allen residents and the, the complaints aren't coming from the residents in Glen Allen. The people that are complaining don't live in this ne- in the neighborhood. They're passing through and I've seen the way they drive. And I tell you, there's, there's times they won't wait for me to pull in my driveway. They're on their horns.
Excuse me. You said the magic word that intrigued me.
Yes, sir.
Everybody does the speed limit. Nobody does the speed limit anymore.
I, I, I do, sir. I do, sir.
You're one of a million.
No, I, I don't think that's true, sir.
Chief, how many uh?
I, I think that people not doing the speed limit does not deny me the right to park in front of my house. I think if people are breaking the law, that should be addressed with the people that are breaking the law. I should not be penalized for that.
Chief.
I have a clean driving record, sir.
On your, your uh radar, how many cars were speeding? What percentage?
It says eighty-fifth. Uh, it has a part of it. It says eighty-fifth percentile speed range from thirty-two to thirty-four miles per hour. The eighty-fifth percentile speed in which eighty-five percent of the traffic, uh, oh, so, so fifteen percent, at least fifteen percent of the traffic was over thirty-two to thirty-four. We had a hundred and forty, a hundred and four vehicles in that two-week time span that exceeded forty miles per hour.
Wow.
The speed limit's only twenty-five on that road.
Yeah, wow.
Now, I'll, I, and like I said before, Western is not the only street that is like that. And it's just the way the village was built. We and this is a whole arg- I tell our argument that we are not, discussion we have to talk about. It's the way the roads are built. And I know that people would, will say speed bumps. You can't do speed bumps. We tried that before on Polycle, but it didn't work. It destroys cars. Is there a different design you can do on streets to reduce speeds? Sure, there is. And that's probably something that we should look in the future at. But right now, anytime you have a snow route or a wider street, you're gonna have cars speeding down the roads. You really, you have to think about it as a community, so.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Where was that camera positioned?
Um, it was.
It was north of Third, correct? Or south of Third?
I don't have it on here.
It was, it was south of Third Avenue, correct?
I don't, I don't have it on my, this street doesn't have it.
South of Third Avenue, where the camera was, there's no, this restriction does not apply. Right?
No, I think it goes all the way through.
No, it does not. It goes to Third Avenue. It's right here in writing on your sheet.
North of Third, right.
No, it doesn't go from north of Third. It goes on the property line at one north seven forty to Third.
The Third.
Your camera was parked south of Third, past the restriction area. That, part of that street is straight.
Right.
Right? Okay. It's straight for well over a hundred yards. There's one, two, three, four, five, six homes with fifty-plus foot wide lots before that curve comes into play north of Third Avenue. So, yeah, do people speed up on a straightaway? Yes. But the, your argument is the curve. The camera was where the road is straight. And a stop sign further up. And people still weren't slowing down. There was no camera on the curve. And how many speeding tickets have been written in that, on, on Western Avenue? I've never seen anybody pulled over on that street in three years.
Well, I know they're out there because when this was put out, they I can actually pull up how many traffic enforcement, so you want me to do that? I could do that right now. That, this, I, I have the traffic plan from the results and the um uh the game plan or the action plan for officers for the traffic studies or for the traffic stops. So I'll look that up while you're talking and I'll have it to you by the end.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm that's fine. If you, if you could do that, that's fine without too much trouble. I don't, I don't wanna come across as a pest, but.
No, 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 you, you're correct.
You know, we've lived there for three years and it's, it's been great and I mean, I take my truck across the street for service over there at Dodge and it's kinda convenient. I walk home. It's just, I'm just my driveway is a single-lane driveway. We have four working, working adults living in my house, two younger kids and me and my wife and I mean, I could work around the parking restriction, but if we have guests over, what are we supposed to do? Because people can't drive the speed limit? I can't have guests over at my house that I pay for? Did I pay taxes to DuPage County for? I don't see how that makes sense.
Okay, we got your objection, sir. And uh actually, time was five-minute limit and you talked fifteen. I really appreciate.
I didn't realize that. I'm sorry.
And I, I will talk with my chief. And uh probably we will send, you know, a cop over there to control speed, you know? And then about parking, I, we, I will talk with him.
Okay.
So just so you understand the process, this was up to, it wasn't voted on today.
I understand.
So um you have an opportunity next board meeting as well to?
I understand. Could I say one more thing if it's not too trouble? Is, is non-resident stickers an option? Or are you guys looking to eliminate parking altogether?
Sir, you are living there. And you, when you come, if you want, you can bring more people that will, to me personally, you know, it will affect, you know, what it will add to your objection, you know, most, you know, so.
All right. All right. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I just wanna say something. This gentleman has come before us because he needs help. Isn't there anything that we could do to help him? I mean, couldn't we look into something a little further? Couldn't we do something? You come to the board because you want help and this is what this man has done.
So I think what the idea was today to bring it before the board and to have residents talk about it. So I think he did the right thing and he, he said, like I s- we, we at the police department never did a parking study. We did a speed study. So he's correct. We're comparing apples to oranges of what the argument that Tom had was about being able to park out there. And he's correct. If he has relatives or friends park at his, in the street, there is no place to park except for in Greenbrier. That is the closest spot for them to park. And that's pretty far away to walk to this house. Am I correct? Yes. So he, he does have a, a, a valid point there. And if, if it was a no parking old street, I guess you can try to get parking permission, but is that fair? I don't know. And I, and I'm glad that he came up and he talked and you guys were able to hear the argument. So then you guys can think, is it prudent to get no parking on this street or not? So.
Well, like Doug says, this is only first reading. I mean, we got time to kick this around. He can come to the next board meeting. I mean, we didn't prove nothing tonight, so.
A- a- and I mean, you know, all those other residents who has concern, they can also come to the next board meeting and you know, present their concerns, just like the gentleman did.
Okay, sir. How many residents are affected by this non-parking ordinance, you know?
How many residents are affected by this potential order?
Tom, you can come up.
There's about ten houses there, right?
At least eight, yeah. At least eight.
Yeah, there's ten.
And, and the, and the, the one other thing I wanted to point out is during the day, 'cause I am there during the day to pick up my daughter, nobody's parked on the street. It's just when they come home from work at night. That's it. During the day, that street's wide open. I should have took a picture. I could have showed you all today. It was, it was wide open. Nobody was parked on it.
Okay, so next time when you come, please, you can bring your neighbors, no other residents as well as
Okay.
if you want to
Will do.
bring some to talk.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Sure, welcome. Uh, yes. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I wanna talk about that parking lot or that, the problem that he's having there. This is from you, Mohammed. This is our subdivision doing this. We are putting this family and all of those families hardship because our subdivision, three people, three people don't want parking. We've put up lights. That's good enough. It's twenty-five miles an hour. Mr. Pappas, there has not been an accident there. I am angered by this, having to listen to him when you know dang well, this is three people doing this, Mohammed. That's not right. That is not right.
The argument is not three or two?
Mrs. Siddiqui, let her talk.
Yeah.
That's, that's not right.
Yeah.
We don't have accidents. He is correct where that camera was. That camera is on the straightaway. That camera coming around that curve, I don't, I'm sorry, slow down. The, the people that are speeding, that's me. That is every one of us going to Greenbrier speeding. That's who's speeding there. Because you don't have that many houses or you don't have that many cars going around the final curve. You have what, three houses there? So those speeders are us. They are Greenbrier.
I think.
This has to be relooked at.
Mrs. Siddiqui, wait for your turn.
It has to be, it has to be relooked at.
I'm again.
Excuse me, wait for your turn. You raised your hand and get permission from me?
Permission from you? Okay.
Okay, well, what do you wanna say? Let him talk.
No, no.
Let him talk.
Okay, go ahead now.
First, he has to give me the permission, then I will talk.
Listen, I am here. I am sharing this.
So that's what I am asking.
To have tangency, you have tangency
Yeah.
to make argument for nothing.
Okay.
If you control your anger and I can talk to
Yes.
the, so as Doug said, you know, this is just hearing. We are not passing. And I heard from my resident and that's why I asked for this. As this gentleman has said, he has some valid points. So that's what it is for. And next board meeting, the residents of Greenbrier should come and show their valid reasons. And then we are going to decide. It's nothing that, oh, he's wrong or he is right. It's just, we are hearing.
Do is, we're gonna put their ten residents, and actually it affects seven houses, right? We're gonna put their seven residents against eighty-nine townhomes and ninety-two houses. Who do you think's gonna win that?
I, we are op- open to hear. You know, it's not like eight or seventy-two or ninety. It's, you know, when they complain, and that's why we did all this um study and all this, because they have been complaining this.
Are they calling you personally? Because I'm on that thread.
Yes.
I'm on that thread and there's two people complaining, two.
So why don't you go and talk to them?
I'm gonna send a, I'm going to send a thing right now.
Sure, go ahead.
And I'm going to ask them to come.
Yeah.
I don't understand why we, being the village of Glendale Heights, gets to decide what unincorporated Glen Allen parks their cars. What am I missing? Somebody tell me what I'm missing.
But Kim.
And it's only seven people. I get it. But they need a place to park. Those, those driveways, you can't park there.
Kim, we nev- I, I, we never did a crash study on Western. We did a crash study on North and Western.
Yes.
So when, when Tom asked that question, that's what I said. I don't know. I don't know how many cars were hit 'cause we never even checked.
Well, again, one of those accidents came from our subdivision.
Yes.
So that was on Western and North Avenue. And that was a pretty bad one.
And yes, and those are different. That's different than the parked vehicles.
Than his. Because on Western right there, we all know the curve is there. I understand it's an inconvenience, but we did put some lights up. We're trying to make it easier. I don't understand why we're going through this.
Okay.
But now I, now I'm, now I understand.
Miss Kim, your objection has been recorded.
By five minutes is up.
You took fifteen minutes. That's fine, okay. Okay, I need, yes, yes, go ahead.
We're, we're still on the agenda.
Anybody else? Okay. I need motion to adjourn. Uh, trustee Light, second. Trustee Maritato.
Second.
And all in fa- uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Today's meeting is adjourned. Uh, trustee Schmidt, you have COW meeting.
I'd like to call this committee, the whole meeting of Thursday, June second, twenty-twenty-two, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
So noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Trustee Light?
Um, Carshow and Future.
Future?
And Carshow. Is it one or two? No, it's two.
Okay, trustee Meritato?
Uh, the safety, the safety law goes into effect in January.
Oh, okay. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to address the board?
If we could um possibly flip committee recommendations and public comment and uh, the gentleman's been waiting here for plan commission. If we can maybe get him out of here and then listen to public comment? Sure.
Yeah, anybody have any problems?
No.
No.
Okay, then we'll do committee recommendations. Uh, from the plan commission, we have a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use to allow a restaurant eat-in or carry-out with outdoor dining, serving alcoholic beverages, and a conditional use to allow a drive-through within a C-two community commercial district for Lucky's Pub and Grill located at twenty-sixty-five Bloomingdale Road. Doug, you wanna take the point or?
Tom?
Tom?
This is for Lucky's Pub and Grill. Recommended for approval to the board.
Tom, lean into your mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Uh, this is going into the old um Title Max, uh, which was formerly a restaurant. It.
Burrito Brothers?
Burrito Brothers, yeah, uh, but currently the last occupant was Title Co- uh, Title Max.
Right.
Um, it fits in the area. The, the zone, uh, the plan commission reviewed it. It's a family-style restaurant. It's going to have a drive-through. They're looking for uh the gambling uh and with the liquor license uh machines in there. Not sure if there's uh the intent is to actually have a restaurant, correct, sir? Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, would you like to present anything to us?
If you had any questions that maybe some of the board members.
But this is not the typical gaming cafe. This is actually gonna be a restaurant with gaming.
Okay.
It's a full-service restaurant and we're gonna be put in a bar.
Can you state your name, please?
Sure. My name is John Cianfeglioni. And I'm the property owner also of twenty-sixty-five Bloomingdale Road. And prior to Burrito Brothers, it used to be a Chicago-style grill that I operated out of there myself at that time. And uh, the outlet, the intended use, what it was built for, was for a tasty dog for some residents that had been in the town for quite a while when it was constructed in nineteen eighty-six. It was constructed as a restaurant use. It was constructed as a restaurant use. And then it just for the little bit of time when Title Max went in there. And unfortunately, they had to go out of business because the state passed a predatory lending act that went into effect last March. So thank you to the state. And that's what we're proposing, to try to get the restaurant or the property up and running since it's been vacant over a year. And we will be making a great amount of investment in the property and in the community. And obviously, the gaming is secondary, but the restaurant is our primary focus.
Anybody have any questions?
Looks like my.
Yeah, according to this recommendation, there's nothing indicating video gaming.
It's not part of the plan commission approval. It's they don't need plan commission approval.
Uh, just here, just a recommendation just for the restaurant?
Serving alcoholic beverage.
So they they need that approval to move forward towards the next step, which would be make application.
For the video.
For a gaming license.
All right.
Okay.
You're just throwing me for a loop when he's got, he's talking about video.
Oh, uh, Pat, you have something?
No, I'd 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 like to make make a motion.
Make a mo- okay.
For approval.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and it will go to the board with the recommendation. Do concur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, does anyone have uh, public comments? Uh, anyone in the public that would like to address the board? Mr. Pope?
My uh, my comment is a thank you to you guys. I I was in at the last meeting, and I made a request to Tracy Walters for you guys to add um, the proclamation to include thyroid cancer awareness last month. I think you guys know I was diagnosed with thyroid cancer about six weeks ago. They've removed it, and I'm doing really well. But I really want to thank you guys for adding that to the agenda last week. And I also want to thank Keith, uh, if you pass on. I took um thyroid cancer awareness and self-testing brochures to the senior center so that people could, you know, self-diagnose and test. It's super easy. I actually have one for all you guys. I just, I left it on my front seat because I was running late, but I'll give it to you. But um, they were kind enough to put them in the senior center for me too because, you know, uh, six weeks ago, I thought I had a cold. And then they tell you you got cancer. It's, you know, blows your mind, and it's just something that's so easily detected. So thank you for the proclamation, number one, but also thank you for letting me put uh, for passing that bro- those brochures out because uh, you know, if it helps one person, I just think that was awesome, and they didn't have to let me do that, and uh, I just want to say thank you very much.
You're always welcome. Hope you're doing better.
What are the symptoms, then?
You know, Chester, I'm not kidding you. I thought I had a tickle in the back of my throat, and I went to Walgreens. You know, I was trying every nasal G congestion, and tickle just wouldn't go away. And uh, the self-check is, you could see where my scar is.
Right.
If you test, if you feel right in there, self-palpitate. If you feel any kind of nodual or a lump, that that's a clue to get it checked out. Ninety-five percent of the time, they're benign. I just happened to fall into five percent that wasn't, you know, that was cancer. But um, it's a really easy test to do. It's not painful. And uh, you know, it there'll be almost fifty thousand cases of thyroid cancer just this year. So uh, again, I I, you know, it blew my mind when the doctor told me. It's not a cold, Mr. Pope, but uh, that's just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be in a little bit of an advocate now, and it was so great that you guys added it, and I couldn't be at the last board meeting, and that the senior center is putting those brochures out so that people can pick them up and self-test at home. So thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
We're glad you're feeling better, Ed.
Thank you, Mary.
Now get rid of your limp.
Mr. Barry?
Yes. Hello, trustees, everybody. Uh, I came here to.
Would you just state your name for the record?
So, Bobby.
Okay, thank you.
I came here last year uh, about the, one of the contract, which you people spent over ten to fifteen thousand dollar, measly thirty thousand dollar contract for the cricket. Then I asked you people, did anybody informed you, explain you, why this over ten thousand dollar for the cricket contract? And none of you said, oh, we are not aware of it. That's fine. I have this thing as an exit interview from Joanne. I would like you to get the copy and read it. I will try to come back the next meeting, and I'm gonna ask you question. Okay, one more thing. Trustee Siddiqui was pointed by Kim Darling, direct question, and when he started answering, there was a not from, you get the permission from me, where everybody else not asking for any permission. So these are the things you guys need to get up, wake up, do something. I have other issues, and I have other resources. I will come back to you guys for you, and you will let, I will let you know. All right?
Uh, Mr. Schmidt, I want to answer him, you know. I want to answer him. Uh, Mr. Barry? I tell you, in my presence, there is no favoritism, there is no cronyism, and I am doing the right things, you know, and I will keep it doing. I'm not intimidated by any person. Somebody is leaving or not, it makes no difference, you know. Everybody has equal opportunity. Two grounds are pol- uh, our village property, fair, equal, and transparent. He, this guy was here for twenty-plus years.
Okay.
No access to anybody. Oh, I'm done, you know.
Okay. Okay, uh, trustee Light, the future.
Was it my turn?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Car show.
Real quick, first one was car show. I just want to thank everybody for all the.
Tim, Kim wants to say something.
Not my fault, Kim.
Sorry, you didn't notice.
I've calmed down now. I have a couple of questions. Um. My first question was, why was the pool always closed? How many days was the pool closed? Because we had nobody to work it, right?
The pool that, for nobody to work it, it was closed for two days at the end of the season.
That was it? I spoke with a couple of people, and there was a couple more days than that, so only two days.
The pool was closed during the week, starting August, uh, sorry, I'm gonna give the wrong date. I think the fourteenth.
When school started.
But.
Right.
We were open on weekends. We had to close. My recollection is we were closed on the Saturday and half a day on Sunday of Labor Day weekend.
Because we didn't have any people to work it?
So our.
Is that what the problem is?
Yeah, so our college kids all went back to college.
Yeah.
And the high school kids, uh, the day of, uh, Saturday, the morning of, uh, we had minimum staffing, which was five. I'm going off memory here, but minimum staffing was five. And one um, high school age employee called off that day to come into work.
Okay.
So we couldn't open the pool that day because we did not have enough lifeguards per statute to operate the pool safely.
Okay, so that's why it was closed, and you're saying only for two days?
It was closed during the week once high school started.
Right, which was the tenth.
Because we had no, nobody work.
Okay, but uh, it's not normally closed the tenth, right? School was early this year.
Because school closed early, we closed when, honestly, when our guards all went back to school, and we didn't have the ability to open, correct.
Okay, my second question is, um, baseball. I spoke with one of the coaches, and he said he didn't get the correct equipment this year. Is that possible, Keith?
It's the first I'm hearing about it, so I'll have to look into it.
Can you please look into that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, because I think you already had one team, right? So that shouldn't be something difficult to look into. Did not have catcher's gear for ten-year-olds. That's ridiculous. Couldn't even get a jersey. We travel in Glendale Heights. Our teams have to travel because we don't have any. So they have to travel to North Bro- North Lake and Bloomingdale and Carroll Stream and wherever else they have to travel, and we could not afford a T-shirt for them that said Glendale Heights. Come on.
I will tell you that I doubt that's the case, but I wouldn't doubt.
Going to assure you it is.
I wouldn't doubt that the jerseys didn't come in because we are having trouble with equipment, just like everybody else, in getting stuff in.
So you couldn't get jerseys in and you could not get catcher's gear in?
Uh, you, this is the first I'm hearing about the catcher's gear. I'll look into it.
Because I'm gonna check back on that one. I know Joanne's not here any longer, but Jax has started picking up again at three A M. Not Jax. The garbage company has started picking up again at three A M. There's an ordinance saying they can't pick up till seven. Who's gonna look into that now?
So.
Thank you.
By you?
No, Jax over on.
On Army Trail Road.
The person that calls me and says, Kim, they started picking up again, and nobody's doing anything about it.
I'm gonna have to block away. I have no. I have never heard anybody at three o'clock in the morning.
She sends me a picture every time. Matter of fact, I could probably go through my phone and get the picture of last Thursday's.
You tell that woman, if you know her, if they're picking up at three o'clock, drop a dime and call the police.
Because you have nothing better to do.
No.
So I will do that.
We have patrol at night.
We'll call.
That is good. We'll call, Darcy will get ahold of vendor and deal on that end, and then we'll deal with the responses that happens in real time.
Okay, um, and my last thing is, did we help that poor woman last week? Or last two, last two weeks with the building permits and stuff? Did you meet with her, Shadri? Did you go and meet with that woman who lives over by Chester? Who was heading the building permit issue?
Yeah, we went, you know.
Yeah, he was there.
Yeah, he was there.
And you took care of her?
I mean, that was not, I could help, you know, sorry. Whole village, we cannot help, you know, there's a lot of things, you know.
I don't know.
One, one note about the garbage contract. Our garbage contract does not cover commercial. So Republic Services may do that, but that's not part of the Glendale Heights Village contract.
We have an ordinance that says you can't do it before seven A M., though.
Right.
Meaning, do 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 you have a picture of the truck that was doing it? Was it Republic Services? Only because I don't know who services the commercial account.
We can go, we can go check Jax's dumpster. It'll have the company name on it probably and figure it out.
Vicky has emailed. Her name is Vicky. I don't know her personally, but I had written something, and she has contacted me because of that. And she has sent an email to somebody again saying that they're picking up again at three o'clock.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make sure that somebody's looking into that. And Keith, I'll expect to hear something from you about.
As soon as I have an answer for you, I'll let you know.
I have, excuse me, I have an answer regarding uh, Mr. Coker visiting the residence. She emailed me after the meeting, "Thank you for coming. I am sorry. It was a waste of time because they don't care." What I was forced to put in that is not, is dangerous to myself and Jim, her husband. My plan is to sell in the spring. And she, and another paragraph, "Thank you. I know why." Why did he want to come if he wasn't going to say anything? He talked a good talk at the meeting and would and would take care of it. And she was very unhappy.
Mr. Bialis, you can respond, you know. You are a professional technical person.
So the review of the installation of the stoop and step, which she um, does not like, was the requirement for the code based on specific location, the height from the step down to where it was, down to the ground, and to make the steps meet the appropriate code requirements? And it, the, what she has was to code, and that's correct. Her issue about the um, windows, fall hazard that was, the railing, uh, she was saying it needed a railing, and we advised her at that height, it was not required at the code, thirty-six inches. She would, it would have required that that s- step would have had to have had a railing, but it didn't. It was at a lesser height, twenty-nine inches. So the fall in her concern that she's talking about is something that the resident would have to address on their property if she wanted a railing. The code would only require that hand railing that concerned her about coming off the side of the stoop. We would have required it as a part of the the requirement. I'm sorry. The egress window, she's uh, obtained a contractor, and she's uh, filed for the permit to obtain the egress compliant window for the basement bedroom, which does, which requires an egress window. She's submitted an application for that uh, window to be installed.
Well, Kim, if I can answer that, the basement window is required because if the village takes no action and somebody gets hurt, the village is responsible. So people may not like it, but it's something that we have to do. Kim, can you come back to the microphone if we're gonna?
I'm just saying, the woman, the woman came here under dis- under distress. I mean, she was upset, and we seriously, as a village, couldn't help her with any of that? She, she was well into fifteen minutes, because I remember somebody saying, you took fifteen minutes, but, and we did nothing to help her.
Tom did make a.
That correct, Chester?
Tom did make a good recommendation. She is not prohibited from putting a railing.
Right.
She just chose not to.
Okay, so if she chooses the railing, then everything's fine?
If she chooses the railing, it takes care of her concern about turning to open the door and stepping off of the two-step, the stoop and the step. So, but the village didn't require her to make that ex- that additional expense as a part of the permitting. We required that the steps down to her uh, patio, her deck, met the code requirements, and it required adjustments to what was being installed with the stoop. And then the railing portion of it, which was her fall concern.
Right, I remember that.
We're letting, we let her know, uh, it's not the village requiring her to do that. If it had gone up higher, the code would have, we would have said.
You have to put a rail.
You have to put a railing.
Are codes, are our codes the same as Glenn Allen codes, Carroll Stream codes?
All pretty much uniform.
They are?
Yes.
They're all uniform?
The International Building Code is what we use. And that's, that's, everybody pretty much uses it, yes.
So she was under distress, and there was nothing we could do to help her?
Unfortunately, we weren't able to.
Sam, thank you.
I want to say something.
Actually, I just want to request, Chester, can you read that email again? I wasn't paying that much attention. It's like what?
Chester, why don't you send Mohammed the the email, a copy of the email?
All right.
Okay, and Mary?
Yes, I want to say something. Do you know, when these people come here, they come here because they want help. And that's what our job is. I have a hard time understanding why we don't follow through on everything and make sure that these people are happy. These are our residents. They depend on us. And if we let them down, what are they gonna think about us? All right, I mean, uh, so, oh, it wasn't right. Well, make it right. Do something to help this person. That's why she came here. She needed help. We say, and I've heard this many times, oh, if you need something, come to the board. We're here to help you. Well, these people are coming to the board, and what are we doing? I mean, we'll, we'll look into this. You don't look into it. You do it immediately. These people need help, and that's what we're here for. All right, I I'm sorry I feel this way, but I really do.
We all went to that resident. I've known her for many, many years. She's been on the boards, various boards. Tom did an excellent job of explaining to her. Doug was there. I was there. We asked questions. Mr. Coker was there. He didn't say a word while we were there. Am I correct?
I love the way you talk, you know.
What?
Mr. Coker is a problem, you know, for everything.
Okay.
He didn't say a word.
Chester?
You cannot listen to Mr. Bialis, you know.
Mr. Coker?
Yes.
We're.
Yes, go ahead.
Beating a dead horse here, okay? Trustee Light, would you like to speak now?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, first, I was just car show. I wanted to thank everybody that came out to the car show, everybody that put the effort into the car show. I've been tied with this for many years. It was a great event. The new system is working out better than I thought it would.
Really?
It's, it, we had a lot of, a lot of fun out at the show. It ran a little long, partly my fault, but, you know, it's always my fault, because I do it. But I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and it was a wonderful time, and it was very well-tended. We'll get our wrap-up meeting next week? Next week, we'll do our wrap-up meeting then. I was there for car show. Future. I'm, we have come such a long way within the village, and we've done so much village-wise. We've had, we had a lot of good ideas that Doug has come up with, that we have, you know, worked for and tried really hard to, to move forward on them. I know personally that this, this man is probably running on wits' end, and he's really getting tired, I'm sure of that, he's sleeping now. We need to talk about the appointment of a Assistant Village Administrator, and actually talk about the appointment of all the people that are, that we want to see put back. This needs to happen, this needs to happen quickly. I mean, it's, it's something that has been without Assistant Village Administrator now for well over a year. We have many things that Doug would like to accomplish, I'm sure, but not having the extra help to do such things, I mean, that they're qualified to do, it really hurts. I mean, he can't get half the stuff done that we ask him. We asked him last week for reviews on staff, on executive staff members. And you know how hard it is to do while running the day-to-day operations, which he should be doing his job? It's incredibly hard. We need to get an Assistant Village Administrator. We had an open for Community Development Director, and that was filled rather quickly. We've had this open for way too friggin' long, and we need to get somebody in there to help with this. Their duties, I mean, I got a list of things that they're qualified to do, and they're, Doug is getting worn down, I'll give him that. But we need to take care of this. Mayor, this falls on you. We need to get an appointment for an Assistant Village Administrator, and we need to get things wrapped up. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think this is very important in order to move us forward into the future.
I have a quick question.
Mike, you finished?
Yeah, I'm all good for right now.
Trustee Sadeke?
Yes, so I just need to know, what is the barrier for not getting a Assistant Village Administrator? Doug, just to freshen up our memories, how long you've been working as an Acting Village Administrator?
I think it was mid-November of last year.
So almost like a year? So you are doing Assistant Village Administrator, Acting Village Administrator, kind of both jobs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And when you have to go some place on vacation or something, your backup is, most of the time is Mr. Papas. And I believe, Mr. Papas, you have a lot to do in your own department, and then you are taking care of this as well. And sometimes I saw, when you are on vacation, then Mr. Polling is the, the backup. So why, my question is, why we are even going in this cycle? Why we are not addressing this and having a Assistant Village Administrator? What is the barrier here? So can someone tell me? I mean, why, why we are not getting this done? Doug, you, or someone tell me?
Far as I know, it's an appointment that needs to be made. It's not a hired position, it's an appointed position. And that appointed position lies with, or this gentleman here. That's, that's how I know.
What's, what's the gentleman's name?
Mr. Coker, we know that.
Okay.
But I'm just.
And Mr. Coker has any answer for that? I beg to ask his permission first, if he can answer that?
Well, it's up to Bill, he's running.
Are you ready to listen, number?
Mr. Coker?
I took oath May last year, 2021. When I came to this village, there was one guy, Mr. Maron, he was working, there was no Assistant Village Administrator at that time. And that position was open, what I heard, you know, for over one and a half year. If I'm correct, you know, anybody who are working here, they can correct me if I'm wrong, you know. And now, Mr. Flint, he got promoted, we hired him, he's working. Mr. Maron is gone. He's working as Acting Village Administrator, he's working okay, fine. And second is about appointment. In last meeting, I mentioned that appointing, appointment of directors is not up to me, is Board, Board is problem, you know. Board is trying to play, they are playing like, you know, right-wing conspirators, you know, acting together, working, you know, against Choudhury Coker, who's representative of this village, and he has been opposed on each and everything, you know. I, I don't like, this is to be, this is disrespectful towards my resident, you know. I am their representative, and I do want to resolve this issue, you know, hiring of directors, but they are working under ordinance, they are fine, they are paid, but still, if Board wants, Board should come forward, talk with me, and we can resolve this issue, you know. It's Board, they just talk, they want to be familiar, very popular on media, you know. But backside, they don't come to village meetings, they don't come to other meetings, they just come one or two meeting and talk, "Oh, it's like this, it's like that." I don't like that attitude, you know. You are paid, trustees are paid $4,500, and people who do not come and attend meetings, they should return their stipend, you know. They don't attend meetings, not just they talk, you know. I'm still, I'm, I was ready and willing to appoint directors in June. But what their attitude was, they wanted to play some mischievous stuff, and I'm against that. If they want to not approve anybody, means any director, Bill, Keith, or Police Chief, or any, Doug Flint, you know, anyone, they talk with me, that this is the reason. Without reasoning, they are not going to approve, that is not wrong, that's not right, you know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coker. Trustee Pojack?
Yeah, I have a question. Nicole, have we ever looked for a Village Administrator, sent out ads or anything?
Not.
In about the, yeah, last year, year and a half?
Not as of recently, no.
Administrator or Assistant Administrator?
Either one.
Okay, either one, no.
Either one.
Trustee Light?
Peter, can you clarify this? The appointments are made by all of us?
Oh, the appointment is made by the mayor, and there, the person is approved with the advice and consent of the board.
All right, so the mayor makes the appointment?
Correct. Nobody but the mayor can make the appointment.
Okay.
But then the board has to vote on it, correct?
You have to consent.
Consent.
And approve, yes.
Okay.
Mary?
Did you call me?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I just wanted to say something. You know, besides being the oldest one here, I'm also the oldest on the board, and I want to tell you something. From day one, I was always taught that the Village Administrator must be present at everything that happens, because actually, he really runs the village. Am I correct or not? He does the hiring, the firing, and everything else. The Village Administrator does all of that. Now, from when we lost one of our village administrators, and Mike took over, we were told that Mike should be getting Village Administrator salary. And I don't know if Doug is getting that or not, but he certainly is entitled to it, because he's been doing the work as the Village Administrator.
I am.
Way I'm not finished, let me continue. I think it should be retroactive, like when we go to, when we go to the board and we have union debates, or we have people, negotiations. We always do their pay, always gets retroactive, and I think Doug is entitled to that. A few times I've heard that we've had meetings and Doug was not included. Doug should be included in everything as a Village Administrator. He really runs the village. We are figureheads here, we help, we help the mayor, this is our job, but he's the one, he's the full-time employee that should be in charge of everything. That is my opinion of a Village Administrator. Now, Peter, I don't know if that's what the definition of a Village Administrator is or not, but I feel that that's the way I've been taught.
Our village code delineates the duties of the Village Administrator, and a lot of the stuff that you said is what's delineated in the ordinance, hiring, firing, regulating the employees.
Because you know, I was here when Jim Sinek was our Village Administrator. I want to tell you something, there wasn't anything that he didn't know about, all right? He knew every little thing that was going on. We never had any kind of a meeting that Jim didn't know about. I don't think he was any better than Doug is, and I think Doug should be included in every little thing that we do. Now, that is my opinion, I don't know how the board feels about this, but that's the way I feel. Yes, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. She took a meeting over from you.
Yes, she did. Okay. Trustee Light, we'll let you speak and then move on to Trustee Meritato.
Oh, him, yeah. Mary, I agree with you 110%, he should be included in everything. We all have jobs and, and, and they all have key pieces within our, our, our village, and they all need to perform their duties. And if you're not allowed to perform your duty, you're, you're, you're pushed from it or not given the opportunity to, it's hard to get stuff accomplished. We're looking to move forward, we're looking to get beyond all this, all this rhetoric and, and actually move forward. We need to get an Assistant VA, we need to get Doug in his position, we need to get key people put back in their positions, so we can move forward. We're done playing around, we're done screwing around. Let's just get it done, let's do it for the village and our, our residents. You know, they deserve some progress. That's all I got to say.
Okay. So what's the? Trustee Meritato?
Oh. The governor is gonna pass this bill.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, rehiring, you know, appointment, you know, so you can.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I, as a mayor, as, I will request Mr. Flint, are you doing your job, hiring everything you are supposed to do or not? You hire people, I don't know who you are hiring, you know, I never intervene, but I was accused by one employee that this mayor is violating ordinance. I never did this. When someone leaves, get, you know, retirement, everything, "Oh, mayor is died there." I don't like those people, you know, they are not fair. So now, Mr. Flint is an Acting Village Administrator, so he can, you know, answer, you know, the, what, what you, these are asking, you know, that you are, and you are doing what you are to me, I don't know why they are saying, repeating same thing, what you are doing, you know.
I honestly don't know what to say. I'm, I'm doing the job to the best of my ability, and I am coming to work every day to make the village better and to move the village forward, and to work with the resources that we have to keep things on a positive path. And I come to work every day, there's not a day I don't come to work with a smile on my face. So, you know, I appreciate all the kind words, I appreciate everything. Would a second-person administration make things much, much better and much easier? Of course it will. But we'll come to work every day until the board decides to put somebody else in place and get us the, the second person. But until that time, we come to work every day and just do the best we can.
And you're doing a damn good job.
Thank you.
And other?
Okay, the, we're, we're finished on the, the subject, Mayor.
Same, same. Mr. Flint, talk with Mr. Sadeke.
Mayor, we are finished.
So we can rehire, I mean, appoint, you know, directors and work from there.
I, Mayor?
Yes.
We're finished.
Okay.
Trustee Meritato?
What a circus. The governor is coming out with this bill, or this law, January 1st, Safety.
Safety Act.
So I, I was thinking, is there something that we could put together that, that we oppose what he's doing? We do, we don't, we, Glendale Heights does not support his, his actions?
There's resolutions that have been passed by other boards, yeah, protesting, for lack of a better word, the Safety Act. If the board requests that we bring together a resolution or proclamation of some sort to be against the Safety Act, we will have that ready for the next board meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to take a poll on the board, or, Mayor, you want to take a poll, or, what, what do you guys think?
Chester, how do you feel?
Well, actually, Mendrick and Berlin are working on this right now.
Yeah.
With, with other attorneys throughout the state.
We wouldn't be challenging it.
No, we're not. What Pat is asking is just that the board condemn, if you will, the verbiage of the Safety Act that is written today, because I'm sure it's gonna change between now and November.
That's what I heard, it's supposed to change.
But i- if the board wants us to bring a proclamation or a resolution forward, we can research that in the next two weeks and have it for the board meeting.
Okay. Mary?
Personally, I think we have other things that we have to be worrying about with Glendale Heights, all right? And other people are working on this.
This does affect Glendale Heights a lot.
I know, but other people are working on this also. So let them finish, there's attorneys working on this. I, I think we have enough of our own problems, let's get our work done.
Mary, just for.
That's my opinion, you asked for it, I gave it to you.
Just for clarification, Pat's not asking that we, that the village take action.
I thought he wanted us to.
No, he's just asking that we, we publicly say we oppose this bill.
Oh, yes, I.
That's all he's asking.
That's all I said. I, I. If you, if you listen to what I said, you would understand what I, what I meant.
Seventeen counties have filed lawsuit against this Safety Act. Because I attended meeting, I made a lot of notes, you know.
Okay, Mayor, I'm taking a poll right now, please. Trustee Sadeke?
First, I need to know what is the safety, you know, what are the things?
Do you have a cheat sheet there, George?
There's a, there's a lot to it. The, the stuff that's on the table right now, that they're trying to do a trailer bill to amend, the Safety Act was a, it was a 700 and some.
Forty-one pages.
Forty-one page, that was on a lame duck session, the last day that they could pass bills through, and it was passed between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. So, there was a lot of changes to it. I have talked to a lot of people who voted for and against it, and a lot of them said they didn't know what was inside of it.
So I know we are like late.
It's no cash bail, right?
So why don't we have like a, some, you know, some key points, and maybe we will discuss this on the next board meeting, and then at that time, we can do polling or whatever is needed? Because I think, I, 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 I'm not, like, I really don't know what's in the safety, and I can't decide right now.
Trustee Light?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, you know, I will support Mr. Sadeke's idea, that we should discuss, you know, points, and then, then do, you know, polling.
Okay, I, I also think that we should oppose it, so we have five people opposing and two not opposing, so. Yes. Go ahead.
So we'll, we'll put together a cheat sheet for you, so you can understand what it is?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we'll put together a cheat sheet for you, so you understand what it is, there's a lot of them out there already, and we'll.
Well, if you like, 700, how many pages you sent?
741 pages.
Yeah, so we have.
Want the whole thing?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put together a cheat sheet for the board, and we'll put together a proclamation or resolution, whatever we come up with, Peter, and whatever the board decides we want to do, we do.
Chief, at the last Neighborhood Watch, you had the sheet out, you passed it to everybody.
Correct.
And then you explain it to everybody.
Correct.
If maybe you can, next board meeting, make a sheet and explain it to everybody.
That's what we'll do, so when we get, if we do a proclamation or a resolution, then I'll attach that on there, so we can see exactly what it is, then we'll go over it.
Because everybody at the Neighborhood Watch.
Right.
They understood that 100%.
Right, yep, we can do that.
You did a good job on that.
Could I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Sadeke? Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Light? Take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder, I'm sorry, Trustee Sadeke?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.